Well, let's get started. Good evening, everyone. I'll call this city council meeting to order. Welcome to Laguna Niguel City Hall and to your city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. The time is straight up seven o'clock. Regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month in the city council chambers right here in city hall. This time I'd like to ask City Clerk Gomez, if you would please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lanes?
Present.
Councilmember Genaway?
Present.
Councilmember Minigar is not at the dais yet. Mayor Protem Davies? And Mayor Jennings?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Great. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask Farshad Jahed, if he would please. He's from the Bahis of Laguna Niguel to come forward for our invocation. And after that, we have the distinct honor of having Cub Scout Pack seven-three-four with us tonight. And they're going to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. So thank you very much, if you would please rise.
O thou merciful God, O thou who are mighty and powerful, O thou most kind father, These servants have gathered together, Turning to thee supplicating thy threshold, Desiring thy endless bounties from thine great assurance. They have no purpose save thy good pleasure. They have no intention save service to the world of humanity. O God, make this assemblage radiant, Make the hearts merciful. Comfort the bounties of the Holy Spirit. Endow them with the power from heaven. Bless them with heavenly minds. Increase their sincerity. So that with all humility and contrition, they may turn to thy holy kingdom And be occupied with service To the world of humanity. May each one become a radiant candle. May each one become a brilliant star. May each one become beautiful in color And redolent of fragrance in the kingdom of God. O kind father, comfort thy blessings. Consider not our shortcomings. Shelter us under thy protection. O God, endow us with thy providence. Thou art the powerful. Thou art the giver. Thou art the beneficent.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Cub Scout Pack seven-three-four Color Guard Advance. Please place your hands over your heart. Those in uniform and veteran salute. Please join us in pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two, audience, you may be seated.
And Cub Scouts, you may stand still. We'll be right down. Thank you, girl. Do we have any Cub Scout leaders here with us tonight? Make sure, hey, come on in. You get to be in the pictures and stuff. Hey, guys, thanks for coming. Was that fun? Has anybody done this before? Oh, yeah. Four or five times? Wow. Well, you're getting pretty good at it, I'd say. Y'all got cool new hats. Is everybody a new Weeblo or have you been Weeblos for a while? Two of us too? Okay, great. Well, good. Well, thank you. Aren't they great? They did a great job. So thanks for coming. Wanted to give you guys a chance to say hi to everyone. If you could tell us your name, what school you go to, and what grade you're gonna be in.
I'm A.J. Burns, and I go to Elisa Viejo Christian School, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Truyn Sarah Pauli. I go to Don Juan Villal elementary school, and I'm in fifth grade.
My, my name is Elliot Hartley, and I go to CRA, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Zane, and I go to the Community Roots Academy, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Brayden McCray. I go to Community Roots Academy, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Keon Afshar, and I go to CRA.
My name is Carrie Enzer, and I am Zane Enzer's mother, and I'm the Cub Master for Pack seven-three-four.
Can't ask for a great. Well, on behalf of the city, we wanted to say thank you, give you our thirtieth anniversary challenge coin, and say thank you for coming in. Guys, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Do you mind if I grab a picture with you before you leave? Good. Great. Let's give him a big hand. Thank you very much for coming in, guys. Really appreciate it. And that's it for us. We can return to the dais. All right. Thank you very much. We have two presentations tonight. The first one is on the Transportation Corps drawer agencies transition to sticker transponders. This time I'd like to ask Brian Lockery. He's the president of Communications Lab to come forward for the presentation. I see that you've come forward. Good job. Brian, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor Jennings, Mayor Protem Davies, and Laguna Niguel City Council. Thank you so much for having me here today. Talking a little bit about the sticker transition, and this is something that a lot of folks have gotten in the mail recently. And just wanted to talk real quickly about the history of the transponder. As most of you know, We are now at this hard case transponder is where we were before we went to the stickers. They do have a one-two-three number on them, which I will talk about in just a minute. We were the first tolling agency in the state to go to all electronic tolling a few years back, and now we're transitioning onto these sticker transponders That pretty much do the same thing as these hard case transponders. They're a little sleeker and smaller, and they do not beep, Which is one of the most common questions we get. So why are we switching over to sticker transponders? Well, the idea is, is that we're moving towards state, not only state interoperability, But federal interoperability too. So pretty soon, these small stickers that you're putting on your windshield Will not only allow you today to travel throughout the state. So whether you're on the Golden Gate Bridge, you're on the ninety-one express lanes, or you're on your local seventy-three toll road, These stickers will work, but soon they will also work in places like Texas, or maybe the Sun Pass in Florida, other areas like that. These sticker transponders have been determined to be the, the choice of the tolling agencies throughout the country. So when you get it in the mail, you're going to get a little postcard that looks a little like this. You probably have already received it if you're a fast-track account holder. And as you open it up, you'll get a sticker like this, and you just peel this sticker right off, and you'll put it right on your windshield, Either the lower left, the lower right side, or up by your rearview mirror. And the one thing you need to know about it, though, is once you put it on, it's got to stay on. If you need to take it off for whatever reason, It does break the RFID signal, which means you have to either call the toll roads or go to the tollroads.com/sticker And order a new sticker. You can't take it off and reapply it. So that's something you may want to know. In addition to fast-track account holders, if you're an express account holder, you'll be getting this in the mail. You may have already received it. They're going out now to express account holders. And so it's the, it's the same thing. You're not going to have, the other good news about the sticker is no more monthly maintenance fee. So with the hard case transponder, if you were a rare user of the toll roads, you would be paying a two-dollar per month Monthly maintenance fee for the hard case transponder. Not the case with the sticker transponder. So that's another benefit of that sticker transponder. So as I mentioned, you get one sticker per vehicle. So if you open this up and you have multiple stickers that are inside, It's because you have multiple vehicles associated to your account. So if you have two cars, you'll get two stickers, three cars, three stickers, and so on. You'll want to do one sticker for each of your vehicles. And again, they're not transferable between vehicles. And once you go through the first time through that, through the tolling plaza, It will attach that RFID number on that sticker to your license plate. So then it'll be paired. So in the future, that sticker will be associated to that vehicle, and that's how that works. Some common questions we get. If I have the hard case and the sticker, am I going to get charged twice? A lot of times, people, if you're driving the one-ten or the ten freeway up in LA, You may want to use the hard case transponder because you do get a discount if you have two or three passengers in your vehicle. Feel free to do that. While it will read both the sticker and the hard case transponder, it will record the lower of the two fees. So if you do get a discount by having three people in your car, and you have the switch down to three, It will charge the lower of the, of the fee. So, so that's, if you're planning to travel the ten or the one-ten freeway, You may want to hang on to your hard case transponder. Or some people just say, you know what? I feel more comfortable hearing the beep. Okay, that's okay. You can use this up through twenty-twenty-four. Then after that, the sticker transponder is going to be standard across the toll roads everywhere. The other benefit is there's still a two-dollar monthly maintenance fee. No, that fee goes away with the sticker. And then the frequent driver discount. A lot of people, if they're fast-track account holders and they have this hard case transponder, They know they do get a frequent driver discount. That will continue with the sticker. So if you accumulate forty dollars in tolls or more during any statement period, The following statement period, you'll get a one-dollar discount every time you use the toll road. So that discount will still apply. For more information, I would encourage you to go to the tollroads.com/sticker. That's where we have information about this. We have frequently asked questions. We have a lot of information on there. And we have a, we have videos as well to show you how to apply it and different things like that. And one of the things that we've done is we've incorporated our board members of TCA to be in some of these videos. Each of the cities in the TCA area is represented by a board member. Laguna Niguel is fortunate to have Councilmember Fred Minigar as not only a board member of the San Joaquin Hills TCA Board, But he is the chairman of the TCA Board, and he had participated in one of our videos. So we'll go ahead and roll that video now really quickly.
It worked during rehearsal.
Hi, I'm Fred Minigar, chair of the San Joaquin Hills TCA Board for the seventy-three toll road. Some people want to know what they do with their hard case transponder once they put their sticker on. Well, you have some options. If your transponder has the one-two-three switch Indicating how many passengers you have in the vehicle, and you want to use it when driving on express lanes That offer a reduced fee for carpoolers, You can keep the transponder and mount it on your car for those specific trips. While the toll facility will read both the sticker and the transponder, It will charge a toll based on the reading of the hard case trans- On the reading of the hard case transponder, so you will not be double billed. The hard case plastic transponder will continue operating until twenty-twenty-four. If you don't plan on using the hard case transponder anymore, please don't throw it in the trash. It has batteries. So we ask you to recycle it by dropping it at your nearest household hazardous waste site. You'll be able to put the sticker transponder on your windshield And use it immediately, not just on Orange County toll roads, but on every told, bridge, lane, and road in the state. Enjoy the drive.
Thank you, Chair Minigar, and I'm sorry for the technical difficulties we had at the beginning of the video. But as the chairman said, one of the things you want to remember is not to throw this in the trash. Go ahead and take it to household hazardous waste because it does have batteries in it if you decide you're not going to be using the hard case transponder anymore. But we, we like to recommend is just put it in a drawer, and you can always pull it out and use it if you ever decide to go on the ten or one-ten freeway. So with that, I'll, happy to answer any questions if the council has any.
Great, Brian. Thank you so much. I, I, it was ironic that it froze on Fred standing in traffic. I don't know what that was about, but That was great. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. I understand that Laguna Niguel is the largest user of the San Juan Key toll road. So this is very important. We're very glad that you all did that. Mine's working great, and I still miss the beep, although I don't miss it as much as I'm just getting used to it. So thanks very much, Brian. Any questions? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Fred, thank you. Good job. Our next presentation this evening is regarding the twenty-twenty census. This time I'd like to ask Leila Fahay, if she would please. She's a partner specialist with the Los Angeles Regional Census Center to come forward for our presentation. Leila, welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Council Members, and staff, and amazing people of Laguna Niguel. So my name is LaLeva Fahay. I'm a partnership specialist with the United States Census Bureau. The Partnership Specialist Program is part of Census Partnership and Engagement Program, or what we call CPAP. We have the goal of engaging, supporting, and creating effective partnerships With the trusted messengers and local leaders within our communities. Although the census is planned nationally, it happens here locally. To accomplish an accurate census, four things must occur. We must establish where to count, motivate people to respond, Initiate operations to count the people, and then we have to release the results of the census. Why we do a census? Well, since seventeen ninety, Article One, Section Two of our Constitution mandates that we count the population every ten years. Our mission is to count everyone, count them once, and count them in the right place. It is also about representation that includes the apportionment of four hundred thirty-five congressional seats. And the American form of government, government depends on equal representation in the Congress. And determining this equal representation depends on the census and its results. The census is at the core of our democratic form of government. Lastly, but certainly not least, It is also about federal funding of six hundred seventy-five billion of dollars That comes back to state and local governments for vital programs that your communities need and should receive. All is based on the results that we have every ten years from our census. So last month, we started our address canvassing. That's where we established our where-to-count concept. We update addresses from our local address list and identify locations where people could live for selected areas. After that, we have update leave. And this is an operation that will occur in primarily rural areas. The enumerators go, go out to a housing unit, leave a packet to encourage self-response, And/or the option of using the paper form, Which also allows the numerator to update the map again. Service-based enumeration is the opportunity to count individuals Who are receiving assistance at a service-based location, People who are experiencing homelessness, living in a transitionary location, Recreation locations, vehicles, parks, campgrounds, tent cities, carnivals, Marinas, hotels, and those who don't have a usual home anywhere else. Group quarters is the opportunity to count people who are staying in a correctional facility, Skilled nursing facilities, college residential halls, group homes, or dormitories. March twelfth is an opportunity for internet self-response. People can go online and self-respond to complete the questionnaire by internet. It only takes about ten minutes to complete, depending on the size of the household. April one is census day. It is basically a benchmark day. Later in April, and then in May, we will do our non-response follow-ups. This is where we reach out to the household who have not responded to the questioners, And then we will try to send the enumerators to support and help the people to do so. Here is a timeline on how Census Bureau will be sending invitations and contacting, contacting the public about the census. So as you see, starting mid-March, people will receive an invitation in mail where they can Go ahead and self-respond via phone or online. And then the paper form usually comes after, sometimes in May, April, if people did not self-respond. We encourage everyone to use it, to use the internet, Which is, for the very first time in our history, that is supported where people can self-respond. We have expanded our support for our linguistically diverse population. There will be three ways that people can respond to the census: online, by phone, or by paper. There are twelve non-English languages through the internet self-response instrument and census questionnaire assistance. These languages are Spanish, Chinese, Vietnamese, Korean, Russian, Arabic, Tagalog, Polish, French, Haitian Creole, Portuguese, and Japanese. In addition, other fifty-nine non-language, non-English languages will be available via language guides, Language glossaries, and language identifications. Finally, regional offices are hiring locally and look to, for opportunities To look at the data and understand the types of languages that are spoken in a geographic area. So we are here to ask for your help as the trusted voices in Laguna Niguel To share with your community that the census is confidential and required by law. The Census Bureau is required to keep all responses provided, personal informations confidential, And responders' personal information are protected under Title thirteen of the U.S. Code. We will never share a respondent's personal information with any other government agencies whatsoever. Results from the census are reported in numbers and statistical data only. Under Title forty-four U.S. Code, records are confidential for seventy-two years. All Census Bureau employees were a lifetime oath to protect respondents' information, And penalties for wrongful disclosures are up to five years imprisonment and/or to a fine of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We have not had one incident since Census Act Title thirteen was codified into law since nineteen fifty-three, And we don't expect there to be one either. Our intention and goal is a complete and accurate census. So we do need your help by forming a complete count committee. To do so, we will not be able to do this by ourselves. So what we find that complete count committees are the most effective ways for a city to get involved with its population. Complete count committees bring a structured, focused, and unified outreach and communication campaign To their communities and cities. They develop an outreach plan to encourage residents to respond to the census And explain the benefits of being counted, Especially how the census results are critical for each community to receive the fair share of funding and representation. Committee members are usually experts in the following areas: Government, education, media, community organizations, workforce developments, faith-based organizations, businesses, And others based on needs. As you may know, the state of California has formed a state complete count commission. We also have an Orange County Complete Count Committee. And we are happy to announce that many cities in our county, such as Irvine, Huntington Beach, Anaheim, Have already formed their Complete Count Committee, and there are so many others that are going to kickstart there soon. Community-based organizations can also establish CCCs or Complete Count Committees To reach out to the specific, to a specific sector, especially within those of hard-to-reach populations, Which we have identified, such as veterans, people with disabilities, homeless, immigrants- homeless, immigrants, seniors, non-English speakers, and children, especially those under 5. So a properly-formed Complete Count Committee is the fingerprint of your community. We are here to provide tools and resources to jump-start your Complete Count Committee. We engage each organizations and/or connect you with other Complete Count Committees to serve on, such as Orange County Complete Count Committee. A Complete Count Committee usually should start from the top. It is usually formed by an elected official, or he's or her is appointed, or a prominent community leader. Composition of the CCC depends on the unique challenges and the strengths of each community. During the various 2020 census operation phases, the Complete Count Committee implements activities of a work plan through their government, faith-based organizations, community-based organizations, businesses and medias, and recruitment partners. An effective strategy guarantees that the community residents will encounter census messages during times of work, play, leisure, school, and even worship. A tailored plan will determine the details on how and what the committee will take on, such as hosting small or large events, displaying 2020 census promotional items at a place of work or the organization's website, social media, and many other support activities. So here is a map that is retrieved from our planning database. The planning database shows U.S. housing, demographics, socioeconomics, operational statistics, based on select 2010 decennial census, and also select five-year American community survey and estimates. So also, the colors on the map identify the low non-response score for each census tract. I have pulled up the census tract here for Laguna Nigal, and as you can see, it shows 21.6% of low response score, which means 21.6% of population in Laguna Nigal are hard to count and will not respond to their census. So you can just imagine how much of funding and representation for each person that is not counted will be missed for the next 10 years. So we are currently within our awareness phase and motivation phase. And here is where we like to ask local governments and community leaders throughout the nation to participate in activities highlighting the message that the 2020 census is imminent, and that it is easy, and it is important and safe to participate. In advance to the 2020 census, we have hired thousands of people, and we are still recruiting thousands more. Those are for temporary jobs across the country, and we need your help to hire qualified folks. So we also have today Mr. Steve Berison, who is one of our recruiting team members, to talk to you briefly about our efforts.
Hi, I'm Steve Berison. I'm the Recruiting Assistant for South Orange County. And I just wanted to let you know that in order to hit the goals that we're going to do for the census, we need a lot of people. And these are people that we pay from $15.50 to about $22 an hour. We also have IT people who make more, things like that. And we'd like most of these people to come from the communities that we're counting. So that a community like this, we need a lot more people. We're actually behind in our recruiting goals for this particular area. So people can apply on our website, 2020census.gov/jobs. Or we can also have events in your area, if you would like. We generally get invited to festivals and things like that, and libraries where we recruit people to work. And like I said, the jobs go up to $22 an hour. It's a great chance to work in your community. And we'd appreciate any help on that that we can get. Thank you.
Okay, so we just opened two offices in Orange County, one in the city of Santa Ana and one in the city of Fullerton. And we have to fully staff those offices. We have so many different jobs, from ITs to clerks to supervisor positions and management positions for those who have the experience. And rates are depending on the skills and could be also much higher than what Mr. Berison mentioned. So we want you to know that we are here, and we want to work with all of you. We will be here for the duration of all operations, and are interested in hearing your ideas. The goal here is to look at every possible way that we can work together towards a full and accurate count for 2020 census. In addition to forming or serving on a Complete Count Committee, we want to connect and work with each organization directly. We would like to ask City of Laguna Nigal to appoint a liaison who can directly work with me and my team to be able to get invited to and participate at all of your city's events, be able to distribute census promotional materials, and answer people's questions. Please also connect us with other organizations you may work, collaborate, and network with. So here is again my information, and please follow us on social media and share our messages @USCensusBureau, @USCensusBureau. So I'm available for your questions, and this concludes my presentation.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Any questions?
You mentioned that our participation rate is 21.6 that are very resistant. Is that higher than most communities?
So we have identified an average of 25% in Orange County. So there are areas in your city that show 21%. So you can imagine that's one-fifth of your population, over one-fifth of your population that is missing out. The city is missing out on fundings.
And so what do you suggest that we do to close that gap?
So the most effective way we are suggesting is to form a Complete Count Committee to bring all trusted voices and organizations within your community at one table to be able to structure and unify your outreach efforts. We also like to work closely with you to be able to identify those organizations. We will give you the tools. I'm your tools and resources, so use me and abuse me. But let's get everyone counted here. So yes, once I can sit down with someone from your city that is my point of liaison, I can go over, we have an activity list here. They are so simple. They are as simple as, what we are doing here is basically spreading the word. As easy as it sounds, it's a massive effort because it's the entire country. So these activity lists are such as, you know, share our messages on your social media, provide a link on your city's website, or share our logo, brand census. Census is next year in April, but this is where it starts to get everyone counted.
Thanks. Counselor Jennings?
You mentioned that with the non-participation does affect our city and the loss of funding so that we can effectively communicate and educate our residents on the impact of their not participating. For each percentage point, about how many dollars does our city lose?
We were told not to give dollar amounts. We had actually a survey or a research report from George Washington University, but we were told not to say exact numbers. We don't maybe know, those are estimates, but thousands of dollars for each person that is not counted for the next 10 years.
Okay. And a range would really help drive that point home with our residents.
Yes, it's thousands of dollars.
A lot of money. Are we talking about thousands or hundreds of thousands?
No, for each person is thousands of dollars annually.
Okay.
Because numbers are locked every 10 years, locked in, and it's going to go all the way to, you know, 2030, until we can change that again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Raffay, I was at your presentation when you made the same presentation to the city of Alise Viejo. And the number for the city of Alise Viejo that you mentioned was much higher, if I recall. And I was a bit surprised that the city of Alise Viejo compared with the city of Laguna Nigal is a much newer city. And demographically speaking, their population is mostly, compared with Laguna Nigal, is much younger. So when I heard that percentage in Alise Viejo, that shocked me, that they are not registering with the U.S. Census Bureau. I'm pretty surprised that you said our ratio is 21.6%.
Did you expect lower?
I was expecting it to be lower for a lot of different reasons, because we are a mature city, you know, socioeconomically, demographically. People here typically have moved from surrounding cities. I was expecting that number to be much lower.
I understand. I would be more than happy to share the website or the tool that we use for you to actually, and we encourage that, you will be able to use that tool to actually see much more detailed information about each census tract and zoom into different tracts that we have. But this is what we have retrieved from our data tool.
We are very much interested in the city council. We would appreciate if you can provide it to us. And the second point is to go back to the funding. I serve on the SCAGS Board in Los Angeles. The allocation of funding when it comes from Washington, D.C., is strictly based upon the population. The more people we have here, the more funding we get. The same goes with F-TIP, TIP, any kind of federal funding is tied to how many people we have. So if 21.6% of this city is not represented, that means roughly, I can say that, there goes 22% of the federal funding that we are going to be deprived from getting. And we are a donor city when it comes down to paying tons of taxes, not to D.C., but to Sacramento. So we want to make sure that we get the appropriate count.
That's why I'm here, to point out those numbers and let the city of Laguna Nigal know that we need to get to work and get it started. It's also about representation. What I also like to urgently ask the city to do is to get nonprofit, for-profit organization trust leaders in the communities involved with me or introduce them to me, so I can meet with them each individually and then also highlight our issues here and what we are trying to accomplish. City, Orange County Complete Count Committee. We also have a community-based Complete Count Committee. They have regular workshops. They reach out to this organization. And I would also like to introduce this organization to serve on those Complete Count Committees. They also have funding in place where if an organization need funding for the outreach efforts, they can also use that. They have opened up the bid for proposals right now. So sooner we can get them to serve on those Complete Count Committees, the better it would be for those organizations.
Great, thanks. City Manager, Lieutenant?
Yes, I just want to let you know that City Clerk Gomez has agreed and taken on a special assignment to be our census liaison coordinator and coordinate with me as well as the community.
And that's a relief. Good job.
Would it be extra pay?
No, it's a volunteer assignment. She was kind enough to say yes.
I'm really happy to hear.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll find us very cooperative in that regard.
Absolutely. Having a liaison is going to be the starting point. Thank you so much. I will be in touch. Have a good day.
And that concludes our presentations for tonight. We will move on to public comments. Any person wishing to address the city council may do so. Will need to complete and present a tar city clerk or gold-colored request to speak form. These forms are available at the counter that's located near the back of the city council chambers. Please be aware that the time limit will be three minutes for each person to speak. And to allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read a written statement if you so wish. City Clerk Gomez, I've got two. Are there any more that you have? Okay, very good. Then I will open public communications. Our first speaker tonight is Pam Lawrence. Pam, welcome back. Good to see you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Jennings and members of the city council. I'm Pam Lawrence, 28942, Nigal Vista, in the beautiful city of Laguna Nigal. I am here tonight representing the American Cancer Society Coastal Communities Relay for Life, one of the executive leadership team members. And there are two other team members with me. And I'd like to introduce them both briefly. You know Martha McNicholas. Martha's been a longtime volunteer with Relay. And one of the primary things that she did for Relay is our silent auction. And we are up to, I think, about $4,300 so far. Final count is in. Is that about right? For silent auction. And then Valerie Farrell, Val's in charge of our new 5K run that we had prior to Relay. Valerie is the most amazing fundraiser. You cannot say no to Val. I don't know what it is, but you can't say no to her. Good example is tomorrow, we're picking up a check from Stater Brothers for $2,500 that Valerie arranged. So wanted to introduce them. And mainly, I'm here tonight to thank all of you for your ongoing support and generosity for our event. We couldn't do it without you. We're so happy to be back in Laguna Nigal. And we value our partnership with the city so much. I do personally, and the team does as well. The large majority of us are Laguna Nigal residents, and we're very proud of that. Also proud of the fact that because of your generosity and some other fundraising, the City Family Fights Back Team is the number-one fundraising team for Relay this year. Thanks again to the city's generosity, the hard fundraising efforts of some team members, donations from friends, family, staff members, council members, and the community. So thank you. Thank you all for that. To date, we've raised about $35,000. And I keep saying "to date" because the final accounting isn't in yet. We're continuing to fundraise. We will be doing that for about another month. So if there's anybody out there who still hasn't made a donation, we'd be happy to talk to you. A list of thank yous. I'd like to thank the council also for inviting us to participate in the carnival last month. It was not only a wonderful event, but a great opportunity for not only Relay, but for all of the nonprofits in the community to get together and have the opportunity to introduce ourselves to people who don't know we exist. A lot of good services out there, and it was perfect timing for us to be able to promote our event as well. So we thank you for that. A few more thank yous. The Sheriff's Department. Representatives in the Sheriff's Department have been at our Laguna Nigal Relay every year since I can remember. Chief McDaniel was there this year, along with Sergeant Songer and another deputy whose name I don't know. So if you'd pass my thanks along. And Sergeant Songer actually bid on the silent auction item and won, so congratulations, Jack, if you can hear me out there. The Parks and Recreation Department, near and dear to my heart, they will still always be my babies. Thank you, Allison, so much for getting some tables, chairs, and especially canopies. It was so blazing hot, as you know, that day. I apologize. We tried to put the dignitaries in the shade, but the sun kept moving. And I know you were sitting with the sun right in your face, and appreciate you hanging in there with us. It was brutal, but we survived. Troop 772 was there to do the presentation of colors, so thank you, if they're still here. If the troops want to come back anytime to help us out, we'd be more than happy. And then just a couple of more things. Mayor Jennings, I noticed that you bid unsuccessfully, unfortunately, on one of our silent auction items. It was a gift certificate to a local restaurant and some vintage Laguna Nigal wine glasses. There is another set of vintage Laguna Nigal wine glasses with your name on them as a gift for being with us and for providing the welcoming comments. I'd be happy to drop that off to you at a later date.
Thank you so much.
And then quickly, two more things. We thank you in advance for your consideration of our grant request for next year. That's on your agenda for later on this evening. And then I have some t-shirts for you. We just kind of grabbed some different sizes. And a certificate thanking the city for its participation and for its sponsorship. And we'll be back at a later date with a more official thank you. So once again, thank you all so much. We're so happy to be home again and appreciate your support.
Pam, thank you so much. It was a great weekend. I really appreciate it. I had a lot of fun.
Thank you so much for being there.
Barely noticed the heat. It was so much fun.
I'm glad. You were the only one who said that.
Might have been the shade I found, too. I don't know. So thank you very much, and thank you for the very nice kindness as well. Our next speaker is Philip Mladnich. Phil, welcome. If you would please state your name and address for us.
Yeah, my name is Philip Mladnich, and I live at 24241 Cherry Hills Place in Laguna Nigal.
Great, thank you.
I've been here since 1992, and... I've been here since 1992, and I enjoy the pool that we have, the city pool. I think it's one of the best pools I've seen in Southern California that I've used. And my only concern is there's no outdoor shower. They took the outdoor shower away during construction. So, I'm making a request that while they're still in the construction phase to put an outdoor shower. I know some adults that would rather shower outside than go in the locker room for health concerns, and I was thinking about the parents with small children. Instead of having the children go in, or hopefully, they wouldn't let them in by themselves into an enclosed locker area, they'd be able to shower outside, and the parents could keep a visual contact with the child. I think it's important that the children in our community learn how to swim. We're right next to the Pacific Ocean. So, I think if we can accommodate families in this community, I think that would just be one small increment or asset that would help or encourage families to use our beautiful pool. So, I don't have a bone in this fight. I just, all the pools, since the pool's been closed, I've been going to all these different pools in Mission Viejo, up in Newport Beach, down in San Clemente, and they all have outdoor showers. The only pool I've went to that was remodeled, it was up at LA City and San Pedro. They spent $3 million, and they didn't put an outdoor shower. So, we're not the only city that doesn't have an outdoor shower, so.
Great. Well, thank you so much for letting us know.
Yeah, thank you for letting me present this.
I saw some of our staff taking notes, so we'll see what we can do about that, and we've got your information, so if we need to, we'll get back with you. So, thank you very much. I think that concludes. Any more requests to speak? No? Okay, good. And public communications is closed. We'll now move on to our consent calendar, items one through nine. This time, we'll pull some of those off of there. I'm gonna pull items number five and seven. I'll look to my left. Councilman Menegar, any for you? Any to pull or abstain or anything else you mentioned?
Oh, I have two items to abstain on. On the item number one, the warrant register, on page four of 17, let's see, payment number, there's a couple for 4778 to Dell Marketing. Dell's my husband's employer, so I'll abstain on those. And then I will also abstain on item number three, the minutes of the September 3rd meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Reins?
I'd like to pull five and eight, please.
Already pulled five. I'll add eight to the list. Mayor Proton? Great, thank you very much. Okay, is there a motion to approve the balance?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilmember Menegar, seconded by Councilmember Jenaway. Subject to the abstention, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Let's move to item number five on the consent calendar, which is the allocation of city grant funding and the report back from our ad hoc committee relating to the various levels of funding. I pulled this to discuss a couple of things, one of which is the rules associated with how we do this. And I've got some comments.
Excuse me. May I go first, please?
I'll take care of that. I'm gonna go now, and then we'll get to you in just a second, if you would. The first part of that is that we need to be mindful of what those are, and we were concerned, I was concerned when I read it, maybe you guys can provide some clarification when we get there, that, one of which was the, that we had one late application. I was concerned about that, and we had two others that were, did not submit an application, but we had proposed grant funding on. So, those allocations, I think we need to be careful of, because, one, our rules state that we have a deadline, and we have deadlines for almost everything, including commissioner appointments and applications for other things, and RFP responses and all of that. So, I think we need to be very mindful of that, which isn't to say that we don't love and appreciate all the people that are on this list. This is certainly a list of the who's who of people doing wonderful service in our community. So, this isn't about that. But the one thing that I am concerned about is complying with the deadlines. The other thing is that there's a few on the list that I'd like to propose adjustments to, if we could. And I'll flip over to my notes, and if you want to follow along, you can do the same. The first one was number three, which is the America Legion Post. Of course, America Legion is one of our favorite organizations in town. The request was for $990, which really isn't the number amount. Two things about this. One is it's a room rental, so it falls more, in my mind, in the area of an operation cost. I would also note that they requested a reimbursement at $90, which is three hours at $30 apiece for sea country, and we rent the community room across the hall from City Hall here. That's free of charge during the working day to nonprofits like that, and it's only $25 afterwards. So, I think if there is an amount, it's a reduced amount, but I would suggest that that is an operating cost that we should probably think about moving. The next one is number eight on our list, which is the Extraordinary Lives Foundation. That one's a little bit different. We had funding last year, $2,500. I understand that this is the one that takes children to ball games and goes to the purchase of a book. I think that the type of thing that they're providing for mental health awareness event, I think $2,500 was appropriate. The proposal was $3,000. I'd recommend that we keep it at the $2,500 over last year's appropriation. The next one was item number 10, which is Laguna Niguel's Women's Club. There was a reduction there, and that art contest that it is purporting to go to has a reduction from $3,000 to $1,700. That's a contest that continues to grow. It's getting larger. It's filling up the venue that it was in. It's very, very well attended. It's one that we've supported through the years at that level. I think $3,000 would be more appropriate, and given the other changes, I'll recommend, I think there's money for that. The other one is item number 12, which is a request. They requested $5,000. The request was for $1,000 to establish a youth brass band, which involves the acquisition of instruments and things, and the recommendation was $1,000. I think if we're gonna do that, we probably need to do something meaningful so that they can acquire more than probably the one or two instruments that $1,000 would acquire. I'd recommend a change to $2,500 for that amount on number 12. The next one is item number 16, which is the Orange County Academy of Science and Arts, and this is the one that, you know, I really struggle with this. It was a late application. We love them, obviously. They're one of our jewels in town, and they're doing great work. So, one, it was late, and the second one is, is in the past on this committee, because I've sat on that committee, and I've been involved with applications related to that committee, is that these seem to relate to capital improvements. They relate to lighting and other equipment, which we have said no to in the past by other entities that have asked for similar things, and I'm concerned that we may be asking for, or they are asking for a capital improvement. A capital improvement is prohibited by our rules on that committee. So, my recommendation is that we graciously and take a pass on that one and say no, primarily because it was late. And then secondly, are 19 and 20 on our list, which are the two that were proposed for two entities. South County Outreach was the first one. Family Assistance Ministries was the second one, and they each receive $10,325 in CDBG money and other grants, and I think these are more than appropriate. They just didn't apply, and when they don't apply, they leave us in the precarious position of trying to do something that wasn't there. I realize we got a phone call from them saying that they were having some transition issues. My preference on that was to take these amounts, the proposed $15,000, and refer it to the homelessness task force, because that's really who they handle, have a further conversation with them about how we can help. We've got these monies. We're not going anywhere. We can certainly agendize this anytime we want to. So, those are my recommendations on that category. If you flip over a couple of pages to the back page of that, I did not propose any changes to the amount for the school-based activities, save for the voluntary drug testing program from Aliso Niguel High School. I received a call from their principal and others at the school. The funding request was $8,000. The last year expenditure was $6,675. The proposed change this year was to fund it on only $2,000. It will not go forward at $2,000. The program costs more than that to operate, and there isn't another funding source. I'm told from the principal and others that this is a very, very active program, and that not only our residents are participating in that, but it allows them to test Aliso Niguel students and students from Aliso Viejo, and it doesn't matter which student gets tested. That gives everybody the very, very convenient way to say no to drugs. And in a world where opioid use and drug use and vaping and all the rest are extraordinarily rampant in our schools, we have to do something more than that, and defunding this at this time is just not a priority that I think we should undertake. So, I recommend that we push that funding to the requested $8,000. I'm told that the program is expanding, that the students are, that more parents are registering for the program, and as they do so, their funding needs increase. So, with that, that would bring the total community services allocation to $37,200. It would leave the allocation for special event grant funds at $6,000, and move the school-based activity grants funds to $18,500, and then the $6,000 for the CUSD high schools to participate in the holiday parade would stay the same. So, those are my recommendations. I'll make a motion to do that, but we'll have discussion about what comes next. And Councilwoman Reins, you wanted to speak. Go ahead.
So, in the meeting, I did abstain from number three because my husband is the commander of America Legion Post, so whatever you guys decide is fine with me on that third one. I just want to make sure that's on the record, that that wasn't something that I voted for. Okay. The couple things that you mentioned about the drug testing program and the reason for the change in that, although we appreciate the drug testing program and what it is designed to do, the reason for us reducing the amount was we had no significant data, and on the community development grants, we're supposed to have data that shows how many students are served and what the results are, so we weren't getting any data. Is that correct, Debbie? That was one of the things we discussed in the meeting, right?
Yes, it was discussed in the meeting, and I have received information from Aliso Niguel High School about the program itself.
Okay. And then the other one was that they had been spending, they had been asking for more money, but not spending that amount of money, so that was the other reason for us looking at a reduction. So, I just wanted to clarify the reasoning behind that, not that we don't support that type of a program, but also the only students that are actually tested are ones that register for the program. And so, did you get a percentage of that?
So, I did receive information from the high school. They told me that there are 1,000 students that participate in the program, and it's actually the parents that sign them up and the parents that receive the results back.
Okay.
It's not a student, and the students know that they're on the list, but it's the parents that actually do the signup. They do testing eight times a year. It's completely random, and according to the high school, it's a big incentive for the students who are signed up, as it gives them an out. If somebody pressures them to do drugs, they say, "Oh, I can't, because I'm on the list. I might get randomly tested." Last year, the cost was $7,675. Because of our auditors, what we had done last year, different from prior years, rather than just give them a check without any kind of a backup, they gave us the costs from the prior year, so that there was some kind of representation and documentation of what their costs actually were. So, their actual costs for last year are $7,675. The prior year, it was a little bit lower because they didn't have all eight testing dates, but in this last, most recent school year, they did have all eight dates.
And what's the enrollment at the school there? Do you know the answer to that?
I do not.
Okay, so it's only a third of the students, then, that are registered for the program?
I would say it's a full third of the students, not only a third, but yes.
Okay. I'm just, I'm saying there's 1,000 and there's 3,000 enrolled, so, okay. That's fine. I mean, I don't mind giving them more. I just wanted to give you a justification as to why we decided that when we were in the meeting, and that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Councilwoman Day.
Thank you. I had said on this committee a couple of years ago, too, and I do have some things in regards to no financial reports submitted. Is that a requirement on the application, correct?
The way the program works, an application is submitted to the city, and at the end of the year, the organization that receives the grant, because they get the money, you know, within 30 days of the council making their decision, at the end of the year, they are required to submit proof that they use the funds for the purpose for which the funds were allocated, and they also provide a financial report. And then when they're applying for the grant itself, that we also ask for a financial report. So, in some cases, there are, for example, the schools, they don't submit a financial report. We understand they're part of Capital Unified School District. It's a big, huge financial report. We don't, you know, get the same kind of financial report as we would from a 501(c)(3) organization.
Okay, so in the past, for instance, number two, Aliso Niguel High School, and also 12, Niguel Hills Middle School, no financial report. Is this also though, because, again, is that the same reason why? Okay, and so, we've done this in the past because of that understanding. Okay, very good. 16, unfortunately, as much as, you know, want to help, we have to stay, go by the rules, and I just, I can't move forward with giving them anything because we do, especially when we look at the rules we have, our commissioners. I mean, there's a lot of people that forget to do the application for commissions, and you wish that they would have, but they know they have to wait to the next year. So, for that, I just don't see any way that we can actually fund this, because we have to follow the rules on that. And, let's see here. I do agree with the drug testing and giving them the amount that they had requested, the $8,000. Again, that's something we started years ago. We had funding for it. It has made a big difference. Believe it or not, 30% sign up for that. That's huge. You know, and I bet you that's probably increased over the years when we first started doing this. And I know, again, speaking to the youth committee, you know, they really liked that, because it did give them an out, a reason to say why they can't do drugs when they're being pressured to do something like that. So, this is definitely a great program, and I would agree to give them what they need so they have it completed for that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Jenaway?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, I've said on this committee before, and I know it's really hard to make these decisions, because we have so many organizations doing incredible work in our community, and I thank both council members for being on that committee and having to sort through all this information. Though I do agree, though, that we do need to stick to our policy about being late and not accepting late applications, because there's so many things in the city that we do have applications for, in addition to commissioners and committee members, and it would be actually discriminatory if we did accept a late application, for one, and then that opens us up to everything else. And then there's those organizations, well, they would have submitted, but they were late, so they didn't, and we'll never know about them. But, that, and then also, because we don't accept late applications, I don't think, even though SEO and fam are very worthy causes, that we work with quite a bit, that since they did not apply, that this go-around, we would need to take them off the list, but I think that there are future opportunities. As far as the drug testing, I am in favor of funding the full request, because working with our teenagers on the youth committee, we know how important that is, how important it is to have that program in place. That program is growing, and it gives them a reason to tell their peers that they're gonna say no. It makes it, there's less peer pressure for the students to partake, and we are really working quite a bit with our teens to live clean. So, I am, I made notes of the mayor's comments, and I am, I would support all of those. So, did you make the motion?
I need to make a clearer one, but I
Okay, because I was gonna second it, but if you, but you need to make the motion first.
Unless there's any other comments.
You did on the math.
I did the math while we were talking, just to make sure we got it right, because we do have to be specific about it, so.
I just would like to thank Debbie for giving the data, and I don't have a problem with giving the money now that we have the data, so.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. So the motion is to allocate $37,200 in community services, cultural art grant funds as recommended in my previous comments, allocate $6,000 in special event grant funds as recommended, and allocate $18,500 in school-based activity grant funds as noted in my comments, and to allocate $6,000 for CUSD high school band participation and the extraordinarily wonderful Laguna Nigal Holiday Parade. So with that, that's the motion. I hear there's a second.
There's a second.
All right. Seconded, moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Jenaway. Thank you for that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a question. So since I am abstaining from number three, can I just say yes with abstaining from that? Okay. Then I'm, yes.
Okay. Then that's a yes with no to the exemption. Thank you. And any opposed? Pass this unanimously. So thank you very much. Thank you to Councilwoman Raines and Councilwoman Minigar for all their good work on that. It's, it's very difficult to tell our wonderful service organizations no to something or say less because we know how important this is. So we thank you and thank you to staff as well for all the efforts they did to do that. I pulled item number seven for just a quick comment. I wanted to say thank you. This is how this is supposed to work. Item number seven relates to a amendment to a contract where the scope of the work needed to exceed what was in the contract itself. Our public works director, our city manager are on top of this. They are new to this program. All of this occurred before them, which leads me to believe that they are watching closely. And I've met with both of them separately to ensure that that's exactly the case. I was very, very pleased with this catch. It's an old amount. It probably dates back prior to a year, but it's, when an invoice comes in for that, they checked it. We're way inside the contract amounts. It was for a relatively low amount. I think it was $9,000 or something, but it's well under the contract. It's well inside the budget and this is exactly how that's supposed to work. So thank you to the both of you for doing that and I, and I fully commend you on that effort. I think this is inordinately unlikely to happen again, but at least we're, we know you're looking. So good job and well done. I don't know if there's any further comments on that. Council, Mayor Protim Davis?
Yeah, I just wanted to say the same thing pretty much, is thank you for pulling this up and just I wanted to confirm again that this was approved, the original city council approved this within there, so we're good to go.
Yes, that's correct. This is just a change in the scope of.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And Councilwoman Minigar, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do concur with your statement. I just wanted to add one thing. I reviewed their proposal. I think it is prudent for the city to have a not to exceed quantity column in their proposal because I just see the unit cost typically for any proposal that gets submitted to any cities as a municipal corporation, you need to have a not to exceed either dollar amount or on quantities so that we protect the city. But I'm in total agreement with the mayor and Mayor Protim on what they said.
Great. With that, I'll make a motion to move that item.
Aye, second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Jenaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass this unanimously. Thank you very much. We move on to item number eight, which is a rejection of bids and re-scoping on our bus shelters, trolleys, amenities, replacement project. This was pulled by Councilwoman Raines.
Thank you. I have some concerns about this because it's, it's a rejection of a bid and then it's dividing it into two phases. And one of those phases would automatically obligate us for a budget item next year before we have a chance to review our budgets and CIP project updates. So I have some questions that I wanted to ask. If we were not to do it in phases, would we be able to carry over the AQMD into the next fiscal year?
Councilwoman Raines, thank you very much for the question and I'd like to clarify just a couple of different things. The way that the recommendation is set up, we will, the public works department will be putting a project into the five-year CIP for council consideration in the 19, I'm sorry, in the 2021 budget process. So there's no automatic obligation. You'll get an opportunity to vote on that through that process. So it's a suggestion that we will be bringing it forward. It will be something you can consider and then something you will vote on and decide whether or not you want to approve.
So I understood that, but then the two different phases would mean that we would repl, if we were to not approve that in the budget the following year for whatever reasons might prevail, that would mean that we would have half of our city with bus shelters and trolleys done and the other half not done. Is, is that correct?
The two-phase approach would prioritize Crown Valley Parkway to kind of coincide with the decorative elements and the mentee monuments that we've seen go up. Also, Alicia, because it has a little bit higher ridership. And then the Molten Golden Lantern would be in the phase two next year. So there would be some lag time between the installation of shelters with Molten Golden Lantern in phase two, probably somewhere between six months or a year lag time, I would guess.
Okay. So I guess the only thing that I'm thinking is that if we did it all at one time in one phase, is there any reason why we couldn't go ahead and take the money we've already allocated and set it aside? And then next year, when we're planning for the budget, set the money, the $515,000 aside and then be able to do the whole project all at the same time? Because some residents may look at that and go, well, why is my side not getting done and that side's getting done and we're waiting? And it would, I'm just thinking that it would, would it make sense to do something like that? And is it, this is just something that I want to suggest. I mean, I know we want these things done, but I think for the whole community, having it at the same time would be a great thing.
If I may, Councilwoman Raines, the air quality management fund allocation of $550,000 was included in the 1920 budget. I do believe there are some deadlines. I'm going to have to look to Director Erlinson. He and I discussed the deadlines and how we're going to be using these funds. I'm not sure if we might run into that issue. If we do delay the entire project, I'd ask him, no, okay.
No. Okay. So, and then when you're do, so, okay, so then the other thing is part of this is delay, we're having a pause on the clear cha, maybe pausing the clear channel termination. If we do do the delay, that way we're not spending city money on maintaining those since the clear channel money would be continuing to come in up until the time where the, the project could be done all in one phase. Is that something that's possible to be done too?
Yes, we can negotiate a termination date out into the future for clear channel.
All right. So I'd like to make a proposal that that, that we delay and save the money for this part and then allocate for it in the next budget and then delay the clear channel. Just put the pause on that so that we're not spending money and we have all the money to do it all at the same time, so.
I'm going to go around the horn. A couple of things about that I want to make sure that we note. The reason, or at least a primary reason about why this number's bigger than we thought it was going to be is because of the delay. And so the tariffs that we're encountering right now are driving up all of our construction costs. I think those are likely to stay. They're likely to go higher. I'm not inclined to risk that much more money based upon just the delay that we've had so far, or at least the gap between when we approved this and about a year ago when we got it re-scoped, redesigned, sent out for another RFP and then brought back in, that, that gap period has increased the cost. And I think some further delay probably is risky. The clear channel money, it just isn't significant. It's not, it's not a tremendous amount of income. Frankly, if we're going to pull it, it's probably good, I think from a legal standpoint, to go ahead and get that in process so that we have lots of runway to cancel that. I, I do like your comment about doing it all at once. I mean, my, my preference would be that we try to find a way to reallocate the money this time and just do it. But I don't know if that's possible. I don't see it in this budget cycle. It's a fairly large amount of money. We've already beaten this quite a bit about the importance of that. And now that I drive around the city, I can't stop looking at the bus stops. So I know that it's a big deal, so. I, I appreciate the rest of council's input on this, whatever you all think. And we'll start here with Councilwoman Jenaway.
Okay. Well, and I appreciate Councilmember Raines' comments and taking a look at it and seeing if we should, you know, maybe pull back and do it all at once. But some things that I want to consider is, I noticed how you broke it into two phases and phase one would be the area along Crown Valley Parkway. I think it's very important for the city to make sure that's looking as good as possible to look, because our community center is going to be opening very soon. So people going to the new Crown Valley Park Community Center are going to be going along Crown Valley Parkway. And we just want that, we want that to look stellar because we're also depending on some facility usage fees from that and, and, you know, renting it out for weddings and then, you know, different events. So I think it does, it is important to have that ready as soon as possible as far as to coincide with the opening of the new community center. I am concerned about delaying it even further because of the escalating costs. And what is the, but I don't know, what is the figure of the revenue we receive from clear channel, whether or not that would make a difference?
Our clear channel revenue on an annual basis is about $104,000 annually.
Okay. So this would be, if we did it in two phases, would it be cutting it in half for one year?
I haven't read the franchise agreement in a while. If you were essentially, I guess if you're talking about the number of stops and you were to keep the remaining or existing stops in place with an agreement, I think theoretically you could say approximately revenue would be cut in half.
Okay. So while that sounds like a nice chunk of change, but also look at the delay. The delays cost us about half a million dollars already from what the original estimate was to now what the figures we're looking at. So if we take 50,000 versus half a million.
Yeah, no, I, I'm with you. It's, it's not a great choice, but I, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Anything else?
Those are my comments. But again, I just want to focus on that when we open Crown Valley Park Community Center, that everything's looking just great.
Right. Mayor Protim Davis?
I mean, this is one of the situations that it can, it is what it is and we're not too happy about it. And my concern is not only the tariffs, but we know that minimum wage, price of material, everything's going up. So I would too love to be able to do this all at once, but if we push this to the next year, it could be even higher than we're expecting to the point where it's going to be, all right, now what do we do? Do we even, you know, we have to relook at this. So I agree that we need to do the, the main ones that we have on our materials, Crown Valley, Nigal, and I would say move forward with it. I think it's, otherwise we're just going to get hit if we push this entire project to next year. We're going to get hit even more. So obviously you would like to do it all at once, as you had said. But, but that's.
Thank you. I wanted to echo the same thing. I, I think the sooner that we can get started on the phase one aspect of the project, which is Crown Valley, Alicia and Nigal Road, we can provide, you know, those excellent services faster to the residents, so why not to, to move ahead with the way this staff has presented the agenda.
Okay, great. And then Councilwoman Raines?
I understand the concern about the tariffs and everything. So then we're talking about the proposed budget for phase two is based on today's pricing. That could also go up too. So we don't know like how significant that that would be also. So I, I just, I thought it would be a good solution to try to do it all together and get it done. And so that's why I wanted to propose it as an option because either way you look at it, it's going to, if you're concerned about all of those other items for expenses, you're going to still see that coming forward. And we're still creating ourselves a, we're committing ourselves to a budgeted item for something because when we finish one phase, the other residents are going to want to see the other phase. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. So with that being said.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I agree, we are committing ourselves to that. We can change our minds, of course, but I've been intellectually committed to this for two years now, so I'm, I'm very excited to get it done. I wanted to say thank you, by the way, to Director Scott because, but for your bird dogging this over the time, it would have, it would have gone awry and I appreciate it. It's, it means a lot. You got the, the designs fixed up and they're back and, you know, on track and that's, that's a good move. So thank you very much for that. I, you know, as one of the committee members, I'll make a motion to approve a staff recommendation. I'm looking at Councilmember Minigar right now because he was on that too, so.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you had a motion? Did you make a motion? I didn't hear. Okay. I'll, is there? Okay. Well, is there a second to, is there a second to Councilwoman Raines' motion? If not, it fails for lack of a second. Then I will make a motion to approve as staff recommended. Is there a second for that?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Councilwoman Minigar. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Is that yes or no? Okay, yes, okay. They all pass this unanimously. Thanks everyone for that. Appreciate it. We then move on to, I think that's it on the consent counter. We then move on to city attorney, item number one, which is being done, not by city attorneys, being done by our city clerk Gomez. So the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to give Amy a break because Kevin and I have been working on this for several weeks.
Right.
And I know a little bit more about it. She is going to help me answer questions though, if you have any regarding any of the technical parts and the ordinance. But anyway, I want to start by saying good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim and city council members, honorable. This item was included in the city clerk's work program for fiscal year 2019-20, which is to update the municipal code provisions relating to the operation of the city commissions, boards and committees. Ordinance number 2019-198 has been prepared to centralize all of these provisions out of a series of separate resolutions into one central division in the municipal code. The ordinance will also allow for one-year term options on each commission and committee that does not have this provision in order to allow the city council and the appointees more flexibility. The ordinance will take effect in time for the next recruitment beginning in October of this year, with appointments taking effect in January of 2020. Also included in this item is resolution number 2019-1299, which will repeal all of the previous resolutions and will be effective immediately. And both Amy and I are here to answer your questions.
Great. Well, I really appreciate that. This is a good cleanup mode. We've been talking about it for a little while and this is an easy one to say yes to in my mind. Are there any comments from the council? Councilwoman Jenaway?
Yeah, no, I just want to thank city clerk Gomez and city attorney Ennis for working on this because this is something that we as a council have requested because we have this dilemma sometimes when we are interviewing our commissioners and committee members and there's some that need to be appointed for a one-year term and we don't have that option. So thank you for working on this.
Great. Ditto that. Anything else?
Can I make a motion to move?
Okay, moved by Mayor Protim.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Jenaway. There you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass this unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you both for all your work. And that concludes all of our discussion items. We'll now move on to any other business and council reports. I'll start with my right on Councilwoman Raines.
Happy Constitution Day. I just want to say how grateful I am for the, the thoughtfulness and that went into our constitution and especially our 14th amendment. I wouldn't be here today if we didn't have Citizenship Day and my parents didn't become naturalized citizens. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
That's great. Couldn't agree more. Mayor Protim Davis?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Debbie Bell because I believe this is probably your last council meeting with us. Is that correct? It's really been a pleasure and a blessing to have gotten to know you and thank you for everything that you've done at the city. We're going to miss you and wish you, you know, the best and hopefully you're just going to relax and enjoy your grandbabies and, and go from there. So thank you very much for everything you've done. Also want to say that we had a very, very productive, very fun car wash. We did the Marines a couple of weeks ago and I want to thank everyone that participated. We did over $3,000, I think, which was great. It was a hot day, but everyone was fantastic. I also had the opportunity to go to Mol- Molton Elementary School and we have Rishi Sharma and Dennis Mulvaney from the Laguna Niguel Military Support Committee. They collected 700 letters to the, to the military that these kids wrote, which was huge. And I want to thank you very much for, for that. It was, it was just wonderful. So it was a great opportunity to do that. Thank you very much.
Great, you bet. Councilwoman Minigal?
No special report. Thank you.
My goodness. Councilmember Jeneway. Somebody note that on the record, would they? I want to make sure. Can we put that on the minutes? I want a gold star.
Well, on September 5th, Mayor Jennings and I had our meeting with this year's new youth committee. Those are our 15 high school students who are appointed to, you know, give input to the city council on what our teens want and need and also to be ambassadors to the youth for, for the city. And I, I am just so proud of these students to see them grow and develop their leadership skills and create their, you know, grow their own voice over the years. And a huge amount of appreciation goes to Gretchen Malcolm with our Parks and Rec Department because she works with these students and helps them, you know, trains them to lead so that they, the first meeting, she's guiding a little more. By the end of the year, they are running the whole thing. Well, over the years, we've been talking to them about live clean, you know, drug abuse prevention and also mental health. And last, at the end of last year, last school year, one of the many members of the youth committee brought up the topic because of the tragedy that happened at Don Juan Middle School with the student committing suicide and wanted to really work on teen mental health and bring that awareness to the students and also to bring resources to them. So they have worked very diligently and this is all driven by the youth committee members. They are having an event on October 12th, Together for Teens. And it is, it will be 8:30 to 1 at Capistrano Valley High School. There are multiple organizations participating in this, healthcare organizations, mental health organization, the, the wellness, what is it, program, WPC. It's a rather new, I want to say Wellness Prevention, but it, yeah, but Wellness Prevention doesn't sound right. So, but it's, it's a group of parents who have gotten together in our, in our high schools for mental health awareness and providing resources for our students. So the youth committee is working very diligently on this. They have, there's a number of speakers and breakout sessions. So pay attention to that. It's for teens and for parents on October 12th. And then also Mayor Protim and I are working on the fact you need to know about vaping. If you heard the news, say another death has been attributed to vaping. This is something that we need to learn a lot more about and provide that information to parents and teens. So, and I know Mayor Protim talked about this before and I don't know if she wants to add anything else tonight, but what I do want to add is to the youth committee, we have listened to you because when they're asked, what would be most effective for you and your peers? What is the most effective way for you to get this information? And is it to you, is it to your parents? It's to both, but they want to be separated. They want to be in two different auditoriums because they don't want to be sitting next to mom and dad while this information is being provided. And also the, it'll be targeted, it'll be differently. The speaker will speak differently to the teens than they do to the parents. So just want our, you know, the youth of our city to learn, to know that we are listening to you and we will provide those resources. So that is something that has developed with the, the planning for this event. And I know if Mayor Protim wants to say anything on that.
Thank you, yes. We're, we've got this October 22nd expect flower coming out this week and it'll be at Niguel Middle School. And again, we will have two separate workshops going, one for parents and one for the teens. Again, it's, it's very important. This isn't a surprise. Unfortunately, five, six years ago, when used cigarettes came out, we knew this was not a good thing, especially with flavored juices. And now they're just, you know, putting it with cannabis and, and nicotine. It's, it's horrible. So I think this is really important for the parents to be educated because the way that they're, you can go online, it's called Good Vibes, and you can buy, you know, these sweatshirts that you can actually put the vapor into the pocket and then you can just vape right from the, the drawstrings. And so a lot of parents don't know what's going on. The schools are actually looking to get vaping.
Vape monitors.
Yeah, monitors so that they can put them into the bathrooms. It's, it's getting that bad. So we'll get that out there, but please, we're working with the school. They're going to be pushing that out as well to get as many people as we can. And we will continue to do whatever we need to do to prevent this. Thank you.
And so that is Tuesday, October 22nd. So please mark it on your calendar. Last Tuesday was the first junior civic workshop of the school year. So thank you to Mayor Jennings, yay, and City Manager Letourneau for presenting to the middle school students, what does city government do? So they did a great job, so thank you very much. And next month.
We crammed that into like three minutes. I mean, it was, it was tight.
No, you didn't.
It was tight.
And also thank you Chief McDaniel for being there, too, talking to the students about pedestrian safety so they get to and from school in a safe manner. And next month, we'll be talking about the origins of Red Ribbon Week and have a former DEA agent. And I just want to add my appreciation to, for Debbie Bell, for all that you've done for the city. You have really served us well. You've served the residents of the city very well. And we are going to miss you very, very much. But wish you the best, enjoying your grandchildren, and don't be a stranger, Debbie.
Great, thank you very much. We'll go around the horn for just a second. I'll come back to me in a minute, but Chief McDaniel?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. Our next shred identity theft event is this Saturday from 7:00 to noon. So we'll be in the City Hall parking lot out here. You do not need to arrive early. We'll get you in and out in about 10 minutes if you arrive after 7:00 o'clock. It's a great way to get rid of those documents that can come back to haunt us. So we'll be there from 7:00 to 12:00 and I think we'll have plenty of capacity for everyone. I, too, would like to thank Debbie. I appreciate your counsel and your friendship through the time that I've been here with you, and I wish you nothing but the best.
Great, thanks chief very much. Assistant City Attorney Grayson, welcome to, welcome to the horseshoe. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Any report tonight?
No, just that Mr. Ennis is off in Ireland. As we all should be jealous.
We should, we should take a moment and reflect on our misgivings for not being there with him. So that's good. So thanks very much. Thank you for being here tonight. Director Erlinson, anything tonight?
Nothing to report tonight, but congratulations, Debbie. You deserve a well-rested retirement.
Great. Community Development Director Adunia?
No report, other than to wish Deputy City Manager Bell a wonderful retirement.
Great. Does Deputy City Manager Bell want to talk?
Never. But thank you very much for all of your kind words and your support over the last few years. I have always said that my favorite job in city government has been to be an assistant or a deputy city manager, and I've been so lucky the last two years to serve in that capacity here in Laguna Niguel. I am retiring after more than 30 years in city government and I've served in a lot of different positions and, and really I call this job the unicorn job because it's amazing. And you all have helped it be that way, both the department head team and the city council. And thank you very much for that.
Thank you. We appreciate you putting your rainbows in those unicorns, too. You did great.
Same here, Debbie. Congratulations on your decision to retire and join the glamour world. I'm envious. I know it'll happen for me someday. I'm not rushing it, but enjoy it and we'll miss you and you're, you deserve it. And I also wanted to congratulate Councilmember Minigal. I got to see the video a few times. I don't know what happened with the lag, but you did a really fantastic job. So, so good job.
Great. Director Giglio?
Thank you, Mayor. The Senior Expo is this Friday at Sea Country Center from 9:00 to 12:00. There's free admission to the event. The first 100 people are going to get a goodie bag and there will be raffles, door prizes, health screenings, vendors and free food. Also, the 19th Annual Haunted Trails is just around the corner. We will be looking for Monster Volunteers. There's a mandatory meeting at 6:30 here at City Hall on Monday, September 30th. Volunteers must be 13 years of age or older, and there's more information about both of those on the city website. And also congratulations, Debbie, and wishing you the best in your retirement. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Elson. Director Scott?
Congratulations on your retirement. It was a pleasure to work with you, Debbie. I wish you all the best. I have nothing further.
Great, thank you very much. City Manager Letourneau?
Yes, I'd like to encourage anybody who has not submitted the strategic plan survey and shared their thoughts with us to do so. The deadline is September 27th. It's gone out citywide. We've gotten a lot returned, more electronically, but a lot are coming in, in the mail, so that's great. And it's, there's a link on our website if somebody misplaced their survey. You can still get to it that way. And I want to thank Deputy City Manager Bell. Thank you so much for all your hard work and for helping me transition and you've been a great resource and assistance to me and I wish you all the best in your retirement.
Well, great, thank you very much. I, I wanted to say thank you to Dennis and Donna Mulvaney specifically for the 9/11 event that they threw this week. I'm not sure why we hadn't thought of that in the past or who it was that thought of it, but I'm very, very pleased that they did. It was very moving. We had, many of our scouts were here. The parade of flags was particularly moving. They brought their own flags from their own scout troops there and, and set them all up. And it was just a great event. I, I, I'm always moved by that day. We always pause in sort of a somber remembrance and that was a very, very nice way to do that. So thank you for that. And we got to use our, our courtyard outside City Hall, which is, which was a perfect day for that, a perfect day for remembrance. I have seen the stack of responses that came in and there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of them. I was going to take a picture of it because it looks like there's a, you know, big bag of, of mail coming in, but they're opening them and we're getting terrific responses. So please, please respond to the strategic plan if you had not yet done so. It's all the announcements I had. I wanted, if I could, to ask my council colleagues to join me in the, well, I've got a bit of a presentation I'd like to make and say a couple of words. And Deputy City Manager Bell, if you would, please so kind to join us. I promise not to embarrass you, unless it's too late. Well, Debbie, you can come over here in the middle. This is, you can be by your friend Lori, too. You know, I'm not, I'm never sure the right way to say thank you, but I, I was surprised actually when I looked this up. You've only been here since August of 2015. I swear, it seems like it's been a very, very long time. And then for that, I mean that in the best possible way. We're so appreciative of all you've done. In addition to being the Deputy City Manager and Assistant City Manager and all the interims that you did, you've also been the head of HR for a while, and that is a very difficult job in any organization. And you're to be commended for sticking that through and it's, it's, it's yeoman's work and we appreciate it. Your commitment to the city has been unlike any other. It really is unique and specific and, and always, always appreciated. And you always take the time to spend as much time as we need as council members to try to walk us through the things that we had questions on. And I just wanted to say thank you. So on behalf of a very grateful city council, I present you with the city towel plaque that says Debbie Bell, Deputy City Manager, August 2015 to September 2019, and say thank you very, very much. Well done. And have a great retirement. I'm always envious of people that get to retire. I don't know how they do that, so good job. We get a picture?